Welcome to the September 15th, 2025 Board of Commissioners Meetings. We will now have roll call. I'd like to invite up Pastor Mike Atkins from Open Door. If you'll lead us in invocation, please, sir. Good to have you.
Good to be here. Let's bow our heads and pray. Well, we're so grateful and thankful to be here on another day that you have made. Lord, we're aware of everything and all the different things that are going on in our country. And so, we just, today, we yield to you. We remember your words that say in Proverbs that a man creates his plans, but the Lord directs his steps. And so, I pray a grace and a favor, wisdom over every steward and commissioner here tonight, that as they speak and have conversation, that they would speak on behalf of the community. We thank you for all that you are going to do in this meeting, that you'll be with us in this meeting, and we'll be careful to give you all the praise and all the glory. It's in Jesus' name we pray, and everybody say it.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Now, we're going to invite up Griffith Brimhall to lead us in the pledge.
Good evening. I am Griffith Brimhall, a senior at DH County High School, and I'm currently the senior class president as well as FBLA president. I'd like to thank you all for having me this evening, and at this time, ask that you stand if you are able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated, and thank you for having me. Good evening.
All right, now, we will move on to the appointment of the vacant county commissioner seat. Madam Manager, do you have the recommendation from the Pitt County GOP?
Yes, the recommendation from the Pitt County GOP is to appoint... Thank you, yes, the recommendation, I understand, from the Pitt County GOP is a recommendation for Mr. Richard Zech.
All right, we will do like we appoint to all boards and commissions. We will nominate, and we will vote in reverse order. Do we have any nominations?
Mr. Chairman.
She went first, yes. Yes, ma'am.
I need Chris McGlynn, don't I?
Yes, please. Here, there you go.
Thank you. Yes, Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Gary Weaver.
All right. Any further nominations?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to nominate Mr. Richard Zech.
All right, any more nominations? All right, we will now close nominations. We will vote in reverse order. All in favor of Richard Zech, please vote. May I make you vote, please?
Ready to go.
For what it is, just vote.
I thought it disappeared. I don't see it.
Okay, no.
It does not, it didn't do it.
Okay, we will re-vote, please. This is for Richard Zech.
This time, it never found any.
It's this system. Motion fails. Now, we'll vote on Mr. Gary Weaver. All right, Mr. Weaver, congratulations. You'll please come up here and take your oath office. Feel free to bring any family that you have with you.
I do solemnly swear that I, Gary Weaver, will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and the laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge my duties as Pitt County Commissioner, so help me God.
Mr. Weaver, you can come up here and have a seat. We got a package for you right now. Congratulations, sir. Hope it's everything you thought it was going to be. I'll tell you that. If you will give him a rundown quickly of how to do this when you need to. All right, moving on to approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that we... Move the Farmville Fire Station, Section 12, Item 1.
Yes, sir.
Move it to the first meeting in October, per the request of the presenters.
Got a motion, a second, to approve the agenda with the moving of the Farmville Fire Station request to first meeting in October. Motion and second, please vote. Okay, all right. Got to re-vote in just a second when it pops up. All right. Yes, please. All right. All right, now, I need approval. We're moving on to presentations. We can have approval, please? I'm sorry. Got to get a public address to the board first. Anybody signed up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you have one person signed up to speak, Stephen Hardy-Brase.
Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A total of 30 minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Hardy-Brase. I live at 3340 North Green Street in Farmville. I want to start off first by saying that I support the men and women and the duties and the work that they do in the Farmville Fire Department. I respect them greatly and admire their dedication. I also respect officers, such as yourselves, the elected duty to manage affairs of our county with wisdom, fairness, integrity, openness, and financial responsibility. I recently learned that the Section 504 Plan, finally and recently adopted by the town this summer, despite it being a 1973 federal law, was just copied from a private company. Significant problems with it have come to light. As you may recall, I address concerns related to the mandates of 1990 ADA Civil Rights Law. It saddens me to state here tonight that the town fails to continue to comply with these mandates that were due to be completed on or by July 27, 1992. Thirty, over 33 years late. Despite speaking up on these issues for years at town meetings, Farmville has yet to comply with these federal civil rights laws, even with additional 33 years. Its attorney and town managers, both in the college, it's non-compliance. Previously, this commission asked for a study on the issues related to fire departments in the county when the town requested its $2 million grant. To the best of my knowledge, that study hasn't completed yet. So, the information you wish to have to make a prudent decision is not yet before you. As I understand it, we leased the current location of the firehouse back at $25,000 a year because we traded it as a town. We exchanged the current station from the then-appraised $485,000 for land later appraised at $142,000. That's a, with a retro appraisal, that was a, you know, $322,000. But we lost between, according to the state auditor's audit, $108,000 to $268,000, if you read the state auditor's audit. We also paid a private individual $330,585 for a private parking lot to be built. Again, the town lost $222,000. So, the state auditor also then said the town of Farmville improperly managed a community development block grant of $520,000. Half a million dollars mismanaged. So, when it asked you for $2 million, you voted it down eight to one. Now, it's asking you for a $4 million loan at 2% interest, far below the approximate 6% anyone else could get from a bank. So, at 2% monthly, that'd be $14,784.78. At 6%, that's $23,928.2. The difference being, when you multiply it out over the 30 years by monthly, if it's at the 6%, it's $3.2 million difference. That would be more than the grant requested. If it's at 4.5%, it's 1.6, almost the grant requested. So, to shift it off to a loan at a rate far lower, it's unfair. So, I ask that you state a clear expectation that any town such as Farmville be current in compliance with the federal mandates. Also, as you respect your previous decision to have completed a study regarding the fire departments in the county before you make any decisions about grants or loans. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, moving on to presentations. If we can have approval, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolution honoring Commissioner Lauren White.
Can we go ahead and do all four, please?
And the recognition of the Employee of the Month.
And proclamations.
Proclamations for National Manufacturing Week and for recognizing better skills, better jobs, fair day.
All right, got a motion, a second, please vote.
Right of Lauren White and her family would come forward. We have a series of four presentations this evening, starting with the first one. My honor to read a resolution honoring Commissioner Lauren White, as she is joined by her husband and sons. And this resolution reads, and it's long because she's done a lot. Whereas Commissioner Lauren White has faithfully served the citizens of Pitt County as a commissioner from December 2019 to September 2025, and whereas during her tenure, she aided the citizens of Pitt County in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas Commissioner Lauren White played a vital role in the expansion of the Pitt County Animal Shelter, ensuring improved facilities, care, and services for animals in need. And whereas she was instrumental in the growth and enhancement of the Pitt County farmers market, strengthening opportunities for local farmers and improving access to fresh local produce for residents. And whereas Commissioner Lauren White strongly supported public safety by advocating for and assisting in the implementation of enhancements to the county's emergency radio and paging systems, thereby improving communications and response capabilities for first responders. And whereas, as a tireless advocate for fire and EMS, she championed a county fire feasibility study addressing the future needs of Pitt County's fire service to ensure long-term safety, efficiency, and sustainability. And whereas during Commissioner Lauren White's service in 2024, the county completed a tax reappraisal, adopted a balanced budget, and implemented the largest tax decrease in Pitt County's history, while still meeting the needs of county departments and the community. And whereas she played an integral role in providing direction for the strategic expenditure of $35.1 million in American Rescue Plan funds, ensuring that these resources were used to strengthen access to broadband, emergency management, community development, recreation, public safety, water infrastructure, nonprofits, and more. And whereas during Commissioner Lauren White's service, the Board of Commissioners completed construction of two community-centered gymnasiums, a new sheriff's administration building, as well as began the planning and design for a new county administration building. And whereas she has been instrumental in launching the development of a countywide strategic plan. And whereas during her tenure, Commissioner Lauren White generously devoted her time and talents through service on several boards and committees, including the Animal Services Advisory Board, the Pitt County Firemen's Association, the Pitt County Soil and Water Board, Shepherd Memorial Library Board, and Pitt County Board of Equalization and Review. And whereas she was a catalyst for Pitt County to be on the national stage by being instrumental in the passage of a resolution in support of early detection screenings, which was unanimously approved at the Animal Annual National Association of Counties Conference in July 2025, bringing national attention to this important public health initiative. And whereas through her leadership, dedication, and vision, Commissioner Lauren White has made lasting contributions that have strengthened Pitt County government and enhanced the quality of life for its residents. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby express its deepest appreciation to Commissioner Lauren White for her years of service, her leadership, her many accomplishments, and honors her enduring legacy of public service to the citizens of Pitt County, wishes her good health and success in her future endeavors, adopted this 15th day of September 2025, signed by Benji Holloman, Chairman, attested by Kimberly Hines, Clerk to the Board. Mr. Chairman, if you would present that.
No wonder she's leaving, she's tired. Damn, she's done a lot.
And if we could squeeze in for a picture.
Would you like safety words?
I think at my last, the last meeting, I think I expressed a lot of gratitude towards Ms. Gallagher, Mr. Gibson, county staff, and this board. It truly has been an honor and a privilege to serve with everyone and to work with everyone. And somebody put in a lot of time into this, and so, I really appreciate that. That means a lot. Yeah, so, just thank you. And again, thank you to this board for your support in the resolution for the early detection screenings. Hopefully, that will pass at our federal level. And if it does, it will make everything that I have been through and everything I will go through worth it all. So, thank you all to this board. Congratulations, Mr. Weaver. And I will, I will still be around, I will still see y'all. But like I said, I'm not going to call you and complain unless you raise my taxes, so.
Mr. Chairman, not only do we have excellence at the level of our Board of Commissioners, we also have it among our county staff. So, if Beth Woolard would come forward. And you may bring your family as well. And you can squeeze in on around. Okay, as we do each month, it's my honor and privilege to present a certificate of recognition for Employee of the Month this month for September 2025, presented to Beth Woolard in Social Services, in recognition of her dedication and exemplary service to Pitt County government and the citizens that we serve. A little bit about Beth, if you haven't come to know her in your work at Pitt County Government. She is a lead paralegal for Social Services and has been with Pitt County Government for 21 years. Her nominator said that she goes above and beyond to support those around her. She approaches her work with a positive attitude, offering encouragement, insight, and thoughtfulness every day. Ahead of our August 11 court date, while I was out of the office, her nominator said, Beth took the initiative to meet with workers, coordinate with parties, and ensure everything was prepared. She organized the files, made helpful calendar notes, and kept in communication to provide the information that was needed, above all and beyond her usual duties. Beth is always willing to assist others regardless of whether the task falls within her role. Her strong work ethic, reliability, and team spirit make her an invaluable asset to the department and worthy of this recognition. This is a special one for me to have the chairman pass to you because Beth and I worked together in the legal department before she was in Social Services and before I was in the manager's office. And it has been an absolute pleasure to see her continue to grow professionally in Pitt County Government and in that process, get married and have three triplets and continue to serve us at the level and caliber that she does. She's truly a model for our employees, and we are so grateful. Mr. Chairman, if you will present this. And then, we have also put $100 in your checking account by direct deposit, so you can go do something fun. Thank you so much. Squeeze in for a picture. Thank you so much. Next, if we could call up the team who will be receiving the proclamation recognizing National Manufacturing Week. National Manufacturing Week. We've got Kelly Andrews from Pitt County Economic Development to receive a proclamation recognizing National Manufacturing Week the week of October 3 to 10, 2025. And this proclamation reads, whereas Pitt County is the home of more than 100 manufacturing companies with a workforce of nearly 7,000, which comprises approximately 8% of our total workforce in growing industry sectors such as life sciences, renewable energy, information technology, advanced manufacturing, food processing, and more. And whereas manufacturing is the second-largest contributor behind healthcare and social assistance to Pitt County's gross domestic product at $1.7 billion. And whereas five of the 10 largest taxpayers and three of the 10 largest employers in Pitt County are manufacturers. And whereas the average manufacturing annual salary in Pitt County is approximately $76,000, which is more than 21% higher than the overall average annual salary for all jobs. And whereas manufacturers continue to invest, locate, expand, employ, engage, and innovate here, making Pitt County a better and greater place due to these commitments. Therefore, be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners recognizes the significant contributions of our manufacturing sector, which include providing quality jobs, training, and benefits to citizens, investing in our communities, increasing the tax base, thus ensuring that we can provide necessary and desired services, and enhancing our overall economic stability and growth. And whereas the board strongly supports our manufacturing sector and commits to ongoing efforts to ensure they continue to thrive in a business-friendly environment and enjoy a quality of life suitable for attracting and retaining talent. And resolve that Pitt County celebrates manufacturers during National Manufacturers Week, October 3 to the 10, 2025, signed this 15th day of September 2025 by Benji Holloman and presented by the chair. We have a host of activities lined up for National Manufacturing Week, so stay tuned to some pretty exciting events coming ahead. We'll slide in for a picture. And I need to tape that back because it doesn't have all the signatures. And I'll bring it to you. Thank you. And then, our last one is for Better Skills, Better Jobs, Fair Day. We've got a team from Pitt Community College and the Greenville ENC Alliance, and we'll have you each introduce yourselves, please.
Good evening, I'm Yukon Dodon. I'm the Vice President of Business and Workforce Solutions at Pitt Community College.
Hey, everyone, I'm Cece Wilkerson. I am the Communications and Events Coordinator at Greenville ENC Alliance.
Hi, I'm Julia Davis, and I'm the Talent Engagement Manager for the Greenville ENC Alliance.
Thank you all so much for being here. And this last proclamation for the evening is a proclamation recognizing Better Skills, Better Jobs Fair Day on October 2, 2025, in harmony with our National Manufacturing Week, which you just heard. And this reads, whereas Better Skills, Better Jobs Fair has been held annually since 2020, and whereas Better Skills, Better Jobs is the largest job fair in the region and hosts over 100 employers, as well as education and training providers at the Greenville Convention Center. And whereas Better Skills, Better Jobs aims to provide career exploration, awareness, and development opportunities for high school juniors and seniors, as well as opportunities for adult learners and job seekers. And whereas the significance of this day is the incredible impact the Better Skills, Better Jobs Fair has made in connecting individuals to career and educational opportunities in Pitt County and the surrounding areas. And whereas the Better Skills, Better Jobs Fair is sponsored by the John M. Belk Endowment, Pitt Community College, Greenville ENC Alliance, East Carolina University, Pitt County Economic Development, Greenville, Pitt County Chamber of Commerce, the City of Greenville, Cengage, and IBX Media in a collaborative effort to increase awareness and engagement between local businesses, educational institutions, and current and future job seekers. Therefore, be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 2, 2025, as Better Skills, Better Jobs Fair Day in Pitt County, adopted this the 15th day of September 2025, signed by Chairman Holloman, to be presented to Yukon Dodon. And if we could slide in for a picture? Thank you, and let's do one more. If Kelly will come forward. Kelly, come on back. We'll do one more. Thank you so much.
Move along to public hearings. Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Holloman, Commissioners, County Manager, Ms. Gallagher. It's that time of the year again that each year North Carolina Department of Transportation requires us to have a public hearing regarding our 5311 administrative monies. This year is no different. It covers our office supplies, our vehicle insurance, administrative salaries, employee training, and the cost we maintain in our offices. This does not have anything to do with vehicles or anything at this time. We do not have any vehicles that qualify for replacement because they're all on order. So, at this time, if y'all are ready, we can open the public hearing.
All right, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is anybody signed to speak?
Mr. Chairman, there's no one signed up to speak, but you'll recall from your agenda materials if you will affirmatively ask.
Yes, no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Seeing number one, we will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure, the board? Motion to approve? Got a second, please vote. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'd like to thank the young lady for the good job she does for the community. Thank you so very much for your hard work.
All right, now, we're moving on to items for report. Mr. Wes Gray.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Got a couple of updates from public health for everybody. I will start out, just starting to report the beginning of respiratory virus surveillance season. We don't usually see that till next month, but we're already seeing a couple of cases of COVID and start to see that kind of increase. Last year, you can see RSV started really taking off in November, and then flu started taking off December. So, we're looking at probably a little bit of an increase in COVID right now. And then, if everything follows us last year, we'll see probably a November RSV and a December flu season. So, we're going to continue to monitor that. Again, no flu yet. We've just seen a big increase in COVID cases in the last week, 34 inpatients across the ECU health system. Our new family nurse practitioner, Ashley Jensen, did some media last week just to talk about flu, RSV, and COVID, and what people can do to prevent those. Clinic visits. Last year, we finished the year with 10,239 clinical visits for fiscal year '24. For this year so far, the first two months, we've had 1,902 visits. We'd like to get about a goal of 1,000 visits a month. Our goal for the year is 12,000, so we're definitely on track to hit that. Again, this month and next month will be big months with kids coming in for immunizations and child health physicals. And that's one thing I didn't want to mention. Last year, we did this new program with a partnership with ECU, interprofessional team, two advanced practice providers, two faculty physicians, 12... 12 residents from ECU, two medical students, three asthma team members, six ECU health nurses, 30 public health nurses, and support staff. We used four whole days at health department, saw 123 students for health assessments, and a lot more for child health immunizations. So we're going to repeat that again this year and hope to have even more kids. Because at this point, about two weeks ago, we had about 500 kids that were not meeting the requirements for school. So about a third of those probably just hadn't turned in the paperwork, about a third still were waiting to get an appointment, and a third are the ones that we're trying to get that really have no other option, that we'd like them to come to public health to get those child health physicals so they can start school. Our Outreach Division for Social Work, Healthy Start, 34 preconception patients, 75 prenatal patients, and 40 interconception patients. High-risk pregnancies, that's 266 that we're tracking right now that are part of our program. At-risk children care management, 177. 57 first-time moms are enrolled in our Nurse Family Partnership, and then Healthy Beginning Programs, we're at 37 moms and our target is 40. For Environmental Health, I just wanted to show a picture of how we ended last year. We had 1,892 site visits, we evaluated over 1,200 lots, almost 8,000 consultations for on-site wastewater, that's if anybody calls, if we do a visit, do a phone call, help somebody with a permit, we count that as a consultation. And then, operation permits issued, 215, 543 visits for wells and 40 new permits, 2,290 total inspections in food and lodging, and then total consultations over 10,000. That includes restaurants, food stands, schools, cafeterias, hotels, 84 swimming pools, 96 tattoo artists, and down the line. So what I try to do every month for our Board of Health, and what I'll continue to do for y'all, is every month just kind of show a picture of what we're seeing in on-site wastewater. Added a few extra things this year to track, just in the first two months of the year, 393 site visits, 112 lots evaluated. Construction authorizations for new and revised and relocated permits, 32 in the first two months. Construction authorizations for repairs, 15, and operational permits we've issued, 21. Eight wells, 10 new permits, there's some turnover from last year, finishing up some of those. Food and lodging, first two months, 237 total inspections, 110 of those were restaurants, 43 food stands, 12 food trucks, and 27 pools, and down the line. Another big thing we're starting to see in late July, August, September, we do see a lot of vector control activities and calls. So we had six adulticide control activities, spraying, baiting station service, 69 stations throughout the county, complaint investigations, 15, and then a lot of consultative contacts with people calling in about what they can do for mosquito control. And again, I will mention too, we are having two new on-site wastewater trainees come online, so that will raise us up to five, so hopefully we can lower the wait time that folks have for visits. We all want to see that go down and make some efficiencies in our staffing office. WIC participation, in August 2025, we had 4,850 participants in the program, and that's very good. They've increased our baseline in our new year to 4347. So we have to have at least 90% of 4,347 cases. We're at 4850, so we're at 111.6% of our baseline, so we're up higher than the state was expecting us to have, and so hopefully that translates into more dollars into our program from state sources. Our Diabetes Self-Management Program had five new referrals, six initial assessments, and four classes, and one in Spanish. And we've seen a big increase in demand for enrolled mothers in our Breastfeeding Peer Counsel Program, a 25% increase over the last six months. Human Resources, I'll show you a picture of last year, we finished the year with 32 new hires, seven turnover, and two retirements, so a lot of new hires at public health. And then so far this year, we've had three new hires. Update on Dental, through the first four months of the year, we saw about 193 patients, all under 18, so all are pediatric patients. Dr. Vincent's come on board since July 7th, so throughout, through last Monday, we had 46 patients, 57% show rate, that's going up. We just moved the unit to Belvoir Elementary, so that started today. So we've had our first day back in the schools this cycle. We're averaging about six patients a day. And again, these are the schools we're going to be visiting throughout the year, Belvoir, South Greenville Elementary, Falkland, HB Sugg, Northwest, Pactolus, Grifton, and Aiden. I mentioned earlier back-to-school vaccines, but Kayla Mannan, our nurse, has been doing a lot of media, a lot of posting, a lot of WITN, just to try to encourage kids to get those back-to-school vaccinations, especially if you're going to be in 7th grade and 12th grade, just to make sure you're not excluded with those required vaccines. Since the last update for y'all, we've had a few CD cases, so I want to mention those, a communicable disease that we haven't had in a while, and over seven years, was a rabid domestic cat, so we had one case there. We did have the first in the state detection of West Nile in a mosquito trap, so we got that a day before Durham announced our first human case. So we're definitely starting to see a lot of that tick up. We're grateful to have Amanda here in Pitt County that's able to spray for us and do a lot of traps and do some media so people can address those concerns to her. And again, we've done a lot of media around Boar Mosquito Day, just to let people know what's going out, and put this on Facebook, and did a little short video showing how we set traps and how the program works. Since the last update for y'all, there was a measles case in Forsyth County, well, it's Forsyth and Guilford kind of shared that case, so we had infectious disease tabletop exercise over at the EOC with ECU infectious disease, emergency management, and our staff, just to plan for any kind of possible measles outbreak here in Pitt County. We had an opioid settlement update that Pitt County chaired for about 18 counties over in Plymouth a few weeks ago. That was where we brought together all the opioid settlement coordinators, and county managers, and county staff, county finance officers, just to go over all the requirements, reporting, and the activities at each county was currently undergoing. I'll mention too, we did some media around National Wellness Month last month, our nutritionist Elizabeth Dale did a little segment on the news. I'll mention also our Pitt County Public Health Garden Committee, they do a lot of stuff to promote healthy foods and active living, and so we have our 12 beds behind the health department, eight new beds we put in this year, and we also have two beds over at the Making Pitt Fit Community Garden that we service. These are just my new interns for this fall, Sophie Holzing with Nutrition, Valeria Marin with Maternal and Child Health, and Josh Marinsky with Emergency Preparedness. And then I mentioned too, I have a lot of pictures here, but this was a big event we put on in August 23rd, this was the public health, family health block party that we had over at the complex, and that was a big Metasys event at the Ag Center, a big family health expo at the new community center, and then a WIC breastfeeding celebration at the health department. So we had three of those sites, we had 330 walk-ins for medication that we are able to do on-site, 332 picked up online orders, 213 kids, we estimated about 875 people came out to that event, so we had a really big turnout for that. We gave away five pallets of food from the food bank, a whole lot of other items, over 20 other additional partners came in, so that community center was great to have, and it's big, there's plenty of room, and a lot of people were very complimentary of it. This is just a few pictures from that event, some of the staff, some of our partners that came out. The golf carts were a lifesaver because they helped ferry people from site to site, and people to their cars, and all over, so that was, people really enjoyed that. You can see some other photos from the event. All our staff had yellow, so you can tell that's our folks. And then Vashtak Kitchell and Kimmy Moses were really instrumental in putting that on, that was a whole lot of work on the back end. Ms. Alice Keane, a lot of volunteers came out, so we really were thankful for that, to be able to staff that event. And then, last couple of weeks, we started really ramping up some tailgating safety videos, and our Environmental Health did a visit with Petey, and he came out and did a little video to help people know about cross-contamination, and tailgating, and all those type of things. So with that, I will wrap it up and be happy to answer any questions y'all might have.
Any questions from the board?
I want to know your take on the COVID shots, is there a booster that's required now? And what's the age, could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure, there was a lot of confusion at the national level about what's allowed and what insurance will pay for, but Governor Stein issued, told the State Health Director last week to issue standing orders that anybody 65 and older, and anybody over 18 that has any kind of condition, basically obese, diabetes, former smoker, they can go to a pharmacy and say they have those conditions and get a vaccine there without a prescription.
And then, that's the booster?
That's the new booster that's been approved to come out this fall.
And what about the flu shot?
Flu shots, they will be coming out in the next few weeks, and lots of places already have a few, but usually towards October, late September is when those come out. They're available at the health department, at pharmacies as well, and those are for anybody 2 and older.
Okay, thank you, Chairman.
Anyone else?
I do have one more, yes. Thank you so much for your presentation and all that you do. I do have a question also to follow up on vaccinations. I got a call from one of the schools, from one of my children, that they were delinquent in one of their vaccinations, and if they did not get it by a certain date, then they would be suspended. So what alternatives out there are for children like mine that maybe the parents do not want to give the vaccination, if any?
Sure, they can have a religious or medical exemption.
Okay, it's as simple as that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Dave Davis, if you'll come on up.
All right, thank you all for having me this evening. Just talking a little bit about the election that we have this year, we're coming off of last year, big presidential election, everybody and their brother thankfully coming out and voting. Unfortunately, that doesn't happen in municipal elections, wish it would. The municipal elections of our 10 municipalities, eight are participating this year, Falkland, they serve four-year terms, so this is their off year, and Simpson has moved to having their elections during even-numbered years, which that, yeah, a lot of municipalities are going that way, that helps increase turnout. So that's a good idea there. You can see on your screen there the various offices that we have. Will mention, because the questions come up, Fountain, only one person filed for the commissioner seats of three commissioner seats, so that means write-ins will win. As long as they are registered and eligible within the town of Fountain, they can hold that seat. It actually has happened before in Fountain. And Candlewick, no one filed, so that will be all write-ins. During nonpartisan years like this year, there's a write-in slot for however many seats there are, so Candlewick, for example, there's three write-in spaces on the ballot. So hopefully, people will write in and come out and vote. Voting methods we do have are the absentee by mail voting, that's going to kick off October 3rd. The request deadline has moved up a week. Used to be that it was, the deadline was the Tuesday before the election, now it's two weeks before the election. So as long as they get that request, it's in our office by 5:00 that day, we can send them out a ballot. Early voting's going to start October 16th, run through November 1st. Election Day, November 4th, polls are going to open at 6:30 in the morning, run until 7:30 at night, and of our 40 precincts, 39 are going to be open. Swift Creek's the only one that'll be closed because there's no municipal residents within that precinct. And just a reminder to everyone who's watching and tuning in, that we do still have the photo ID, didn't have any issues with it as big an election as we had last year, so I don't foresee any issues with it this year. But just a reminder, whether it's absentee by mail, in person, still have to provide a photo ID. If they can't, there's exception forms, and they can go through a provisional process. With the early voting this year, it was more of a headache than usual. It was what I'm calling the perfect storm situation, because there's so many factors going into it. The first one being our 2009 municipal agreements. With all 10 municipalities, we have a municipal agreement with them, basically to cover how they are to pay for the election, what's their share. And what that does is that Paragraph 6 actually says that we'll have two sites that all the municipalities share the expenses of proportionally based on the number of registered voters. Then if any municipality wants to request a site, they can, but they'll assume the full cost of those sites. Greenville requested two, Winterville requested one, it's been the same scenario we've had for years and years now. And so those generally, we start working on that actually January, February of the year, so they can prepare for their budgets, to know what they want to ask for, how much it's going to cost, and so we can prepare for ours as well. Then the general statute, 163, 166.35, even-numbered years, we're, you know, really, it's really nailed down as to hours of operation, every site has to be open the entire time, but in municipal years, odd-numbered years, you have to have at least one site or an in lieu of site open the entire time at a minimum of the business hours, so eight to five. We've traditionally done eight to six to allow for that hour of folks getting off work, or if they're doing shift work as they're on their way to work, and doing just that one last Saturday. Now, any additional sites, they all have to be open the same days and hours, and this is where it comes in budget-wise and such, trying to save costs for the municipalities. Because a single site for that last week is a little, is about $11,500. So $11,529.37 is what our estimate is. So that's where, you know, traditionally, we've done just for those four sites that last week. And then what really kicked things off is, that I despise, is the State Board Memorandum 2020-13. I tried to fight against this before with a previous state board director, and I got told no, but it has stipulated that the in lieu of site, because our office is too small to hold it, has to be within, in the same city and within four miles or a 10-minute drive. So where we used to have community schools or the center at Alice Keane Park as our in lieu of site, that knocked it out. And the State Board hasn't relented on that. And then the final thing that kind of kicked things off was site availability. You know, having sites available for that entire time, when are they free? Now, the sites that we do have, the Agricultural Center is going to be the main site, the in lieu of site, falls within the memorandum, the statutes, all that. And actually, in the municipal agreements, it specifies the Ag Center and what back in 2009 was called Community Schools. So it's going to be open weekdays from 8:00 to 6:00, and then that last Saturday, 8:00 to 3:00. And then our other four sites will be here at Pat's County Office Building during that last week, 8:00 to 6:00, and then 8:00 to 3:00 the last Saturday, likewise, at the center at Alice Keane Park. We're finally able to get back there, last year we had to shift to Boyd Lee Park because of the construction, so we're back here. This is where most of our voters turn out, and that's why I hate that memorandum, because it makes more sense to have our main site open the entire time, but that memorandum won't let us. Then the ECU Student Center, and the Winterville Fire Station in the community room. And open to any questions.
Any questions?
The letter that the state is sending out about registration and all of that, whatever, I had one call about it, and then I wanted to send them to you.
Feel free.
But could you explain that a little bit?
It's what's called the Registration Repair Project. And it's a culmination of, you know, the lawsuits that have taken place and settlements with the Department of Justice and with the State Board of Elections. And it hinges on the HAVA, the Help America Vote Act. And what it's looking at is, what they've come to realize is that according to federal law, when you register, you are to provide the last four of your social or your driver's license number, or check the box that you don't provide, that you don't have either, and you would show what's called a HAVA ID document. That's something with your current name and current address on it. So it could be a driver's license, which, you know, that's what satisfies most of the voters coming in, but it could be a utility bill, bank statement, something official, you know, with that current name and address on it. And as of August, there were about 82,000 letters that had been sent out across the state. For us, when I checked last week, we were down to about 2,400 out of 121,000 registered voters. But each day, we see that number decreasing. What I've actually found is, rather than voters responding, mailing that letter back in, they're actually doing what's on the letter, where they can go online to the DMV and update their registration there, provide those numbers, and that's where we see, day by day, that number keeps going down.
So if you are not sure as to what the letter means, what would you recommend to those people?
Give us a call, send an email, you know, whichever they prefer, and we can, you know, help provide them the information on what they need to do. If they don't have any of those numbers, what are the types of HAVA ID that they can provide to us? Send us a copy, bring it into the office, that way we can go ahead and take care of that and get it in the system. Because what's going to happen is, those voters will be designated in our poll roster, so when they come to vote early, absentee Election Day, regardless, they'll have to do a provisional. And during that provisional process, they'll provide those numbers, the identification numbers. So it's all a process of trying to settle that lawsuit with the Department of Justice and bring us up to matching what is required by and bring us up to matching what is required by federal law.
But they still will be able to vote? That was the question. I said, I don't know.
Yes. We never turn a voter away. If they're not able to cast a regular vote on the machine, they'll vote a provisional process, and that allows the voter and us time to research, get the documentation, get what we need.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Russell Hill, if you'll come on, vote.
Good evening, Chairman Holloman, Commissioners, Manager Gallagher. This evening, I present to you the August Tax Collection Report. The fiscal year combined tax collection rate through August 31st for real and personal property was 60.5%. The combined rate one year ago for real and personal property was 61.13%. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available through the North Carolina General Statutes. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation to approve the August Tax Collection Report.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion in a second, please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Manager, you're up.
Yes. And I'll just, before I run through my few items, we'd just like to recognize that we have our two Assistant Finance Directors in the audience, Kelly Dixon and Susan Stokes, who have been working diligently with me in the absence of Sam Kroom. Next month, we will catch you up on your monthly financial report. And I'll run through your next meeting dates, October 6th and October 20th at 6:00 PM in this room. And I've listed all of your dates, because many of you have been asking for updates on your calendaring, so you can always refer back to this agenda. On September 16th, those who have, who are, would like to attend the Pitt County American Legion Agricultural Fair opening ceremony are invited to do so by the fair staff at 5:00 PM at the fairgrounds. On September 22nd, at 6:00 PM next Monday evening, you've been invited, all commissioners, to attend a gathering at the garden, the community garden, and we look forward to your attendance there, so we can highlight some of the exciting things that have been happening there. I think they have an exciting evening in store for you. On September 24th, we are again sponsoring the Best of Pitt County event at Rock Springs Center at 6:00 PM. If you have RSVP'd to that event and have a ticket, please be reminded to attend. September 29th to October 1st, wanted to let the board know that Commissioner Mary Perkins Williams and I will be attending the Chamber of Commerce intercity visit in Chattanooga, Tennessee. That is not one of your standard trips, so we will attend that and bring back additional information that we have gathered at that event, but wanted you to know I'll be out of the office those days. Item F, you've heard from the proclamation this earlier this meeting, of the Better Skills, Better Jobs Breakfast, 8:15 to 9:15 at the Convention Center on October 2nd. And then that evening, we hope to see you, if you have replied, to the ECVC banquet at Rock Springs. And the only other date that I have to add in for you is September 18th, 2025. It's just a note to check the county's website. With regard to our strategic plan, that is the date we'll be launching our Social Pinpoint, which is the site where members of the public and anybody who accesses that can provide sticky notes and information in response to our strategic plan. It's a very cool mechanism to gather community feedback. Stakeholder meetings with regard to our strategic plan have been going very well, and they're ongoing as we speak. And then community forums will take place in person in October. Those dates will also be on the, online, on Social Pinpoint, and since they're later in October, I'll remind you all of those dates at your next meeting. But I'm excited with the progress we're making on that strategic plan. Item H, it is somewhat fitting today, on the anniversary of Hurricane Florence, to remind you that September is National Preparedness Month. And so we have done a press release, emergency management has been diligent in getting information out there, and we ask that you and all residents be informed. You can do so by receiving notifications from HyperReach, our emergency alert system, by following Pitt County on social media. And then we also ask you this month to build your supply kit to be ready for any natural disasters that may hit with regard to National Preparedness Month. Item I is a good news item. Many of you have heard us talk about some of the challenges that we have been facing within the Department of Social Services, and one of those being that our Child Welfare Section was under a corrective action plan. That plan had started back in May 23rd of 2022. I am very, very pleased to announce that due to the hard work of our Social Services staff and the leadership of the Director, that we have been relieved of that corrective action plan in its entirety. North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services commended Pitt County Department of Social Services for the work that has been done to improve agency practice, and is pleased to acknowledge that Pitt County Department of Social Services has successfully completed all requirements of the cap. So that is great news and a testament to the hard work, restructuring, and support that this board has provided for Department of Social Services to be successful. And will continue to monitor and keep you advised as they continue to progress without that supervision from the state. Couple of other good news items. Would love to share that Commissioner Melvin McLawhorn, on August 22nd, 2025, was presented the Frederick Douglass Award by the North Carolina Association of Black County Officials in recognition for his outstanding and dedicated service as a county commissioner in North Carolina, presented by J. Carl Vena Foster, the President, and Skip Alston, Chairman of the Awards Committee. So we are thrilled and would like to give Commissioner McLawhorn a round of applause for that recognition. And it is somewhat contagious, our Commissioner's recognition. I'd also like to recognize Vice Chair Mary Perkins-Williams. I had the pleasure of attending a grand opening event of the East Carolina University Community Archives Lab. They call it the ECal, ECU Archives Lab, which is the university's first dedicated space for advancing community-based archival work across eastern North Carolina. That Archives Lab was funded by a $1.1 million Mellon Foundation grant, and it reflects the Master of Library Sciences program commitment to inclusive participatory archival practices that empower students and community partners to preserve and interpret our region's rich cultural heritage. It's located in Ragsdale Hall, Room 128. If you haven't been there, it's worth seeing. The lab will serve as a collaborative environment where students gain hands-on experience and community-centered archival work, supporting both the core Master of Library Science curriculum and the new Archives and Cultural Heritage Informatics concentration within that department. The special treat was at that event, Vice Chair Mary Perkins-Williams was honored with the Mary Perkins-Williams Scholarship Fund to help fund students to participate in this program and support this lab. And so a round of applause to Commissioner Perkins-Williams. And then my final item for report is that we had a very, very successful North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference hosted here in Pitt County. It was an absolute pleasure to work with the NCACC to help put on this event. We had excellent attendance by our commissioners, incredible volunteer support from our county staff. We hosted, over the course of that, Wednesday through Sunday, we had over 750 people from out of county come in and through to participate in educational activities. We had a field trip to the African-American Cultural Trail and another one to the community garden and Alice Keane District Park. And at this time, if there are any commissioners who wanted to share any insights, the floor is open. Mr. Chairman.
I think, one thing... Don't forget to cut yourself off.
One thing, Mr. Chair, it was the most attendees ever in the state of North Carolina that attended this conference, and all of the attendees was very pleased with how we set up the event. In particular, the one over to the Town Bank, that was the talk of the town. Town Bank, talk of the town. And so I think this, having gone to many of these conventions, this to me was one of the most pleasant ones, the most better one in terms of programs and activities.
I agree with that. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Tim. I agree with everything that's been said so far, but I do want to thank the staff for all of their hard work. I know we were the hosts, commissioners, but you all did the work. You recruited volunteers and helped with the association and putting it all together, and your packages for the directors was great. So we thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for all of your hard work.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
All right. We'll move on, but before we do, Ms. Gloria Steinbrenner from the NC House has joined us tonight, want to tell her hey and thank you for always coming out seeing us. I see her all to a lot of events across the county. Moving on to items for consent.
Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to approve the items for consent.
You got a motion?
Second.
Second. Please vote. Now move on to items for decision. Item number one, Madam Manager.
Your first is an appointment to the Cultural Arts and Recreation Advisory Council. You may recall at your last meeting, this is the newly constructed nine-member board that this board made an attribute for each one of the commissioner's seats. At the time, you appointed seven of the nine, and we had to continue to advertise for District 1 and A. As a result of that advertisement, we received one application, which is included in your packet, and we are recommending that you make a nomination to a District 1 seat on the Cultural Arts and Recreation Council, if you are satisfied with the application submitted by Josephine Williams.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Josephine Williams for the District 1 seat.
All right. We have a motion.
Second.
Second. All right. Please vote. All right. Moving on, a moment to the Pitt County Board of Health.
Yes, the second one is an appointment to the Board of Health. There was a vacancy on that board with a seat attribute of veterinarian. Dr. Karina Cacarica changed her county of residence from Pitt County to Currituck County and is no longer available to serve. Dr. Ann Eldridge is willing to serve, and it is recommended that this board nominate Dr. Ann Eldridge to serve as the veterinarian on the Pitt County Board of Health.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to note that we appoint Dr. ...
Second. Got a motion in a second? Please vote. All right. We'll now go to Commissioners' comments. We'll start at my left. Commissioner Manning.
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nunley.
No comment.
Commissioner Floyd Hudson.
No comments.
Commissioner Long.
No comment.
Commissioner Weaver.
I want to thank the board, and I look forward to working with the constituents on this board and the members in District 6 and in Pitt County to keep this great organization going forward. Thank you very much.
You have some big shoes to fill. Mr. Perkins-Weaver?
Go.
We've got a little more business to do. You want a blanket? Yep, load. Commissioner Smith.
I'll just make a comment, first of all...
Don't forget to cut yourself off.
To Commissioner Weaver, I look forward to working with you. I think you're a good man, and what I'm getting ready to say is no reflection on you. But tonight, the Republican Party brought forth a name to us that had been vetted, and we completely ignored it. This board completely ignored it. I didn't ignore it, nor did Commissioner Brown. And that is very disappointing. And as Forrest Gump used to say, that's all I got to say about that.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, and if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I do have a closing statement that's from the heart tonight, so bear with me. I'm going to make up for all the time that you all did not have a comment. But as we go to close tonight's meeting, I'd like to take a moment to speak, first and foremost, to say a farewell officially to Commissioner Lauren White. Her service to Pitt County has been marked by a lot of thoughtfulness in my experience and a refreshing dose of common sense for District 6. Her contributions to District 6 and our county as a whole has left a lasting mark, that is for sure, and it has been my honor to serve alongside of her. Particularly as a mother of young children at home, I would also like to say thank you to her and her family, to loaning them to us throughout her terms. We extend our deepest thank yous to her and to her service from my family. Our prayers remain with her and her continued health, her strength, and her bright future ahead, and I would like to just say thank you again to her and her family. I'd like to congratulate our new success, her new successor, Commissioner Gary Weaver. So welcome to the board. As they step into this important role, I look forward to working together to fulfill a collaboration to ensure the absolute best possible positive impact for District 6 and our overall community. I'd also like to thank the Pitt County Republican Party for conducting a very thorough and professional vetting process. Your commitment to ensuring that our leadership remains very strong and qualified is very deeply appreciated. As we look to meet and convene from the first meeting since the anniversary, excuse me, from the anniversary of September 11th, I would also like to publicly honor the lives that have been lost on that tragic day and the courage that were shown in its wake. May we never forget the bravery, the unity, the resilience that defined us as Americans that day. We remember the heroes and the families forever changed, and let us please stand committed to upholding the freedom and values that they all so dearly defended, regardless of the years that pass. Tonight, however, I must come to my county and speak of the weight that I feel. I have a heaviness in my heart, and I know that a lot of us do. One I know that many of you share, from the tragic and senseless acts of violence in Charlotte, where a young refugee lost her life, to incidents as close to home as Simpson, North Carolina, and so many more, where our communities are hurting across the state and across this nation. We are witnessing an unraveling of regard for human life. As a mother, as a neighbor, and as a public servant, I am grieving deeply, quietly, but deeply. And finally, I cannot close without the acknowledgement of the devastating assassination of Charlie Kirk. My heart aches for his wife, his children, his loved ones, and every single person in this nation who now feels a little bit more threatened than ever before for boldly living out their values regardless of our ideology. So to those who wonder if it's still safe to speak your truth, to stand your faith, or to defend your freedom, I do ask this of you tonight, to please remain steadfast. Your light shines bright in the darkness, and no act of violence can extinguish this truth. We will rise, we will build, we will continue to walk in both truth and love, no matter the cost, just as September 11th. So Pitt County, we have conviction and we have hope. We are not without direction, and we are one nation under God. And it is in Him that we must seek our guidance, our unity, and our healing. May His presence reignite our sense of purpose and our commitment to love one another as He first loved us. God bless Pitt County, and God bless this nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well said.
All right. We will now, Mr. Attorney, if you want to read the...
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been suggested this body go into closed session under the following grounds. One, to discuss matters relating to relocation or expansion of industries under North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A4. And two, to prevent the disclosure of information that is not considered a public record under North Carolina General Statute 143, 31810.
Motion to go into closed session, please?
No.
Motion in a second, please vote.
Motion and second please vote raise right hand. I don't know she didn't hear us or what. Will you fess in the bill to go home just a minute? All right, welcome back. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the closed session minutes from July 21st.
Have a motion.
Second.
Please vote. Yes ma'am.
I offer the motion that we go home and get warm.
Got a motion.
Second.
Second, please vote. We are adjourned.